...meeting for Monday, November eighteenth. So, please, roll call please, yes?
Councilman Scringi is absent from the military leave. Councilwoman Lisa?
Present.
Councilwoman McCrums?
Present.
Councilman Taylor is absent for the COVID. Councilman Papstrat?
Present.
Councilman Mondo?
Present.
President Stanley?
Present.
That is five years, two absence, Scringi and Taylor.
She's sorry, she's up there.
Yeah, he's up there.
Vines, how are you today?
Good, how are you doing?
Good. Start over, be ready, please.
All right, well, I'll pass out a copy of both an image, the design concept of the project, and a draft layout, just so folks can keep these happy. So, thank you for having us back to answer any further questions or just...
Yeah, sorry, guys.
...visit the project, so...
I'm gonna start with some questions. Sure, go ahead, thank you, yes, sir.
You're record reflector.
I mean, thanks for coming back, but last time we were here, we got caught up on the straw house. And that kind of dominated everybody's conversation, which was around there. There was some other things I wanted to talk to you about there. Turning this project, so, and I have no problem with the house, I mean, it's a building, I should say, not a building. But you started, Vines started in oh seven or oh eight.
Yeah.
We got into seven.
Yep.
And you, and your mission was to have fresh, fresh vegetables, fresh food for families that might find it hard to purchase them.
Yes.
And how to prepare it properly and all that. I think you've done a fine job with that. Your offices are where right now?
We're located in the United Presbyterian Church, which is at forty-two Shenango. We're in a basement office, about the size of this room, and next year, we're gonna have ten, ten folks in there.
Ten?
Yeah.
How busy is Shaggy this time?
Um, we have five staff and an AmeriCorps member, and next year, we expect to have seven staff and three AmeriCorps members plus interns. So, so it's fun trying to juggle the space and...
And how soon before you put a building up would you consider?
The goal is to start construction in May next year, and then have all the construction finished, be ready to move in in March twenty twenty-one.
And here's, here's the proposition that I'd like to present to you. We've, every time we sell property, city property, it's either, so far, it's been, my recollection, for housing of some sort, whether it be student housing or affordable housing. And we've always asked for a pilot. And so, when we sell city property, I'd like to see it go out where there's, where it becomes a taxable piece of property. Now, as a five oh one C three, you're not obligated to pay taxes, but so, but either it's First Ward Action Council, OFB, but they do agree to pay some, some sort of pilot stimulus taxes. And I would like to see if you can reach out to your board and see if that would be the condition that they would agree to.
Um, we can certainly explore it, you know, we have grown tremendously in the last twelve years, which is great, but we still do operate on a very small operating budget.
But the city has been very generous to you also, providing water service to the places, giving lots for, you know, minimal amount, power, whatever. So, now that, where you've got to the point where you want to put up a building, a corner piece of property, I would, I would like to, and I think going on, make it almost a resolution of some sort, where if the city does sell any land to whatever, whoever, that it is part of the taxable system.
Do you have, um, do you have any kind of idea in mind of maybe like amounts or terms of...
Yeah, I wouldn't expect you to move it up, at least having some... Jared, would we talk to the assessor about that, who would we, how do we determine what payment will affect would be...
As it relates to nonprofits, it's typically been a discussion between the assessment office and the nonprofit itself. Notably, you know, in this case, it would be knowing what the future square footage, et cetera, what the property would be assessed for, and then determining a pilot agreement from there. Many times, OFB, again, is the example that I kind of knew, because they do pay pilots on nonprofit properties. They have Family Enrichment, which just came through, which is, which has a pilot agreement, but that was determined by the assessment office. Ken, do you know the percentage of properties owned by nonprofits in the city that have pilot agreements?
No. There is pilot agreements with some of them, though, right?
Well, like you just said, yeah, OFB, okay.
Are there...
OFB, First Ward Action Council, the two that immediately come along.
Okay.
Most of the other ones have been there.
Certainly, lots of private housing finance corps that kind of...
Sure. That's a different issue. You're talking about straight, not for profit.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, those are the only two off the top of my head that I think are... But I don't know the status of every one, I mean, you've got a list of all the pilots.
So, is there any, anyone that feels that going from here on in, that if the city does sell a piece of property, that even the side lots, Amelia, that we sell, there's a side lot, and there's a couple of houses that want to take half each, or the one that wants to take it, they have to agree to become part of their, their deed, so that, you know, becomes part of the taxable property.
Right.
So, all I know, in the past, everything that we've sold has, I think, has had a tactical, whether it be all the student housing downtown that first...
This is different than student housing.
Well, I'm just saying, when we've sold, when we've sold, well, big lots, they're paying a pilot.
Yeah, but it depends on... It really would depend on the amount of income that they generate.
Make money, right, that's sort of the, even in an affordable housing project, there, that's still to make, to make money. This is...
But they still get the city assets, like the plowing of the snow, they use the water from the city. I, I have to agree with Councilman Papstrat on this one, I don't see an issue with that.
There would have to be sliding scale that...
Yeah, right, we're not asking, we're not asking what it normally would be.
Let me put it this way, let me put it this way. In your role as an elected official for the city of Binghamton, how often do you think, gee, I would love to do more for our amazing nonprofits in this community? I would love if the city had an extra ten thousand dollars to give Vines or mothers and babies...
We gave them fifty thousand this year.
I'm just saying, how, how often do you think that? This is, this is, we're gonna take this opportunity to take more money away from them?
You're not taking, you're not taking money away, you're providing, you're providing all these services for, for the non-for-profits. We've asked them to voluntarily, the ones that don't, I remember Mayor Bucci asked them to volunteer to pay something for the police protection, the fire protection, the snow removal, everything that the city has to do for these properties that are the non-for-profits. And the response from the non-for-profits was minimal. Some did anti, uh, anti, it was, it was minimal.
Ken, I apologize, but you were asking, Family Enrichment Network, that's the other one that I couldn't think of, Jared reminded me. So, where we just sold them property, but as part of the sale, there was a pilot. That, that seems to be perhaps where this is coming from. But that's, that's the one that we did recently. Non-for-profits like Vines, in my opinion, provide services to the community that aren't for profit, that's, an organization like the city of Binghamton can't provide.
It would stop my own non-for-profit from being able to function in Binghamton.
Well, in the last, they started out with one lot behind seniors. And here they are, eleven, twelve years later, that have grown considerably. And will continue to grow, if you're gonna put up a building and hire more staff, you're gonna continue to grow even more so, which I wish you all the success in the world. I just think if the city's gonna sell a piece of property, that it should be with the condition that it pays some form of tax.
Well, it's in my district, and I can tell you, there are a lot of pieces of properties around there that are vacant, and we should be welcoming this with open arms, saying...
We are welcoming it, I'm just asking for a...
This is a condition I haven't heard you ask ever.
Because they've come down, with the, with the, everything that we've sold has already been coming down for a pilot. We have not had a situation where we're getting like this. They've already come down, they said, you know, we wanna, we're gonna, we want to take the big lots over, we're gonna put up forty-eight units, we're gonna pay a pilot. Put up student housing, we're gonna pay a pilot, we're gonna redo the...
But that's different.
I understand that. This has not come up before, maybe that's why you haven't heard me say it, but...
It hasn't come up before, because it's really unprecedented for a nonprofit to grow in, in this way in our community, to the point where they're, they're looking at a dis-sit franchise portion of our city and saying, hey, you know what? We're gonna build a building here, we're gonna build a new structure.
Build it for free, that's for sure.
And it...
Yeah, the building is, I mean, the...
Absolutely.
Right, so, are the contractors going to provide the building for, for free?
No, but that's not their contractor's job.
I can, I can talk to that a little bit, too, I mean, we are, so, first, you know, I appreciate the support for the project, and, and understanding, you know, the benefit that we provide the community and hoping for growth in that. You know, we have expanded tremendously over the years, and eke by on a very, very tiny operating budget for an organization our size and the impact we have. And the city has invested in us tremendously, and we're, we wouldn't be here without that support. And we're really looking forward to investing in a neighborhood that, that is under-invested in, and a vacant lot that is sitting there amongst other vacant lots. And it's perfect for us, because it's within walking distance of the farm, and that's, that's what we need to do our work. And we, we want to help be a part of, you know, bringing that community life and energy and success. And we're gonna do it on, we're gonna continue to do it on, you know, a slim operating budget, and every dollar that we put into, you know, you know, just keeping the lights on does take away from money that we put into services. So, you know, we have to strike that balance, I, I can tell that y'all do appreciate that. I recognize that this is a council, you know, this is a, the theoretical council discussion that you all have to address, you know, how you wanna approach this. I do appreciate the support we've gotten in the past, and I hope, you know, that that goes really far in the work that we do. And, you know, we've, we've turned thirty-six empty lots across the county into gardens. We have so many vacant lots and no uses for them, and hope, and that decreases the amount of vandalism that happens in those communities, because we have one less blighted property, that decreases the amount of, you know, calls that you get for, you know, garbage being dumped in a lot, right? You know, there's a lot of benefits that our gardens provide to the city. Community gardens increase property values, that helps stabilize communities and stabilize tax bases. So, we have a lot of external benefits that, you know, I think do pay the city back. Obviously, though, if it's something like the council decides you need to move toward pilots for nonprofits, that's not, that's your call and not mine. But I did want to at least, you know, make that pitch for, you know, the, the external benefits that nonprofits have in their operations that save the city money. It reduces a lot of services that the city may have to provide in other ways. And it saves a lot, you know, programs like ours help save healthcare dollars, which impacts all of our, all of our wallets, right? At the end of the day, as taxpayers, as members of this community, so, I'll just share that and believe that.
Yeah, I, I can say, I, I have no doubt of everything that you're saying. But this is a, this is a thought that crossed my mind, and I wanted to bring it forward to you to see if you want to present that to your board, and see what they can say about that. And to the council going further from here on in, that that would be a policy of selling city property.
And I'd also like to say that Vines also does a youth program, which my daughter went through when she was sixteen.
Sure.
It did lead her to go to ecology, and she just graduated SUNY Broome this semester with a four-point-oh in ecology and science. There is a big benefit that we're putting in, and sometimes it's a benefit you don't see in money, it's a benefit in our families. And that's where our nonprofits are, we're benefiting the families, and they're helping people in ways that money cannot buy, because nobody's there to give their money, nobody's there to give their time, these people are putting their time into our community. I, for one, built mine.
Okay, but what's, what's one of the things that you hear from constituents all the time is, I can't move into Binghamton, the taxes are too high. The taxes are too high, here it's over and over again, so...
The taxes aren't too high, because we don't take fifteen thousand dollars a year from Vines.
The taxes are too high, because we need a reassessment.
No, but you mean, just, all I'm saying is that, when you have, when you're selling a piece of property, a city piece of property, and you can benefit some taxes out of it. Vines, we're not picking on Vines, Vines happens to be the one asking for the piece of property.
I, I take tax relief very seriously for city residents, and I think that the city of Binghamton taxpayers also really care about city services and how those are distributed. And the reality of nonprofit organizations in the city is that for every dollar that they spend, they do a lot of good in the community that the city of Binghamton with its services doesn't do. It's, it's an entirely different set of services. To Councilwoman McCrums' point, to create a permanent location in that area of our city that young people can go to, that creates more community organizing, community events for neighbors, that's a really big deal. Deputy Mayor Jared Graham, how would you characterize the LeBarde Community Center's impact on the Little East Street neighborhood?
Quite large.
Quite large. Vines has the ability to do, have a similar effect on this very neighborhood, and the truth is, I think you would all agree with me on this, there is already a long history of nonprofits having, spending way too much of their budgets on overhead and not enough on actually helping people in community initiatives. And having them pay more in taxes is going to...
But that's where Vines, that's where Vines is headed. A huge overhead compared to what they have now.
Every dollar that they, that they have to pay additional in taxes, there isn't gonna go into the community, isn't gonna go into their gardens, isn't gonna go into our youth. So, if you believe in that argument, you shouldn't support us, or support what you're saying.
Other questions or comments?
This needs six votes to pass on Wednesday, and since Giovanni Scringi isn't here, and won't be on Wednesday, you know, it, it needs Chris to support it. So, if you, if you, if you aren't gonna support it, then you need to, to say that, because then, you know, Vines needs to go back to the drawing board.
Councilman Papstrat's gonna make a decision right here, it doesn't have to happen right here.
It doesn't have to happen, he might change his mind when it comes time.
I followed Amelia down to give her my viewpoint. I could have done that over the phone, I wanted to do it here from a city council, so we could get all the input. My mind's not completely made up, I want her to present that report, see what you can come up with, and then Wednesday, Wednesday's the vote, okay?
It's, if I could, sure, it seems like if we're talking about a, like a new policy for the city, then it's something that we should definitely explore, but I don't know that dropping it on, on this particular decision at the last meeting necessarily leads to a policy. We might want to ask...
I'm not dropping it on this, it just happened that they came down to ask for a piece of property for the city, and...
Yes, the purchase of it for, like, five thousand dollars for each market.
Yes, yeah. So, you know, I just wanted to run by you.
I can, you know, I can bring this to my board and see what most say, but...
If you need more time, if you need more time, you can have this question, he doesn't have to be, I can have this question. But just, who's this?
I can guess, they'll say, which is, you know, similar to what I said, but obviously, you know, this, this piece of property is uniquely situated for our work, but also, it's a gateway into the city, it's sitting there empty, and I don't think anybody's going after it any time soon. But it will, you know, we're, we're looking at a tight timeframe for our construction, so, obviously, we'd rather resolve this sooner rather than later, to be able to meet our goals. So, I don't know what our next steps should be.
Amelia, is any of your construction that grant-funded, is there any?
Yeah, a bunch of our construction will be, a lot of it will be grant-funded, there's specific funds through the state that we're seeking for rebuilding, that couldn't be used for anything else, really, so, it would be specific to this project, and specific to funding innovation and green building.
Are there any pertinent deadlines pertaining to these grants that we should be aware of on this decision?
Well, if, essentially, if we're going to line up all of our funding sources, we need a property to get the final approval from some funders, because until we have a property, they, they won't take it. Their decisions are put on hold, right? Which then puts construction on hold, so it, it's like, it's a cascading effect, so, it's all intertwined. And essentially, at this point, funders have told us, we need a property in hand for us to give you an approval, so...
That one, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate that.
If we can, can we, tomorrow, what's the, the assessor that?
Yeah, we can, but, but ultimately, so, that, any pilot agreement would have to be approved by, I'm just talking hypothetically here, would also have to be approved by city council. So, I guess, standard would be that it's a nonprofit that orders off the tax, or so, any information from that, would have to come down to city council and get their approval, whether it was, you know, a dollar or ten thousand dollars, so...
Or, if the board agreed, they could just say a letter of agreement that when they put the building up, that they would agree to pilot up to so much or whatever, so, so they're not out in the air, so, you know what I mean?
Because pilot won't be, so, they didn't go, whatever, that would be, was that what they chose to do?
Yeah, potentially, I don't know in terms of legally, I mean, I think that it's probably two separate things, the sale of the property, which requires six votes, everyone around the table, and then a separate issue of a pilot agreement, which requires some authority. But even getting to what an acceptable pilot agreement would be, would be, you know, partially discussionable at the end. Facility would be in terms of square footage, comparables, what that would be paying in taxes in a given year, I would assume council will want to know, versus what city council finds acceptable as a, as an annual payment.
It'd really break my heart not to see. I've spent four years working with Steve Carson and with Community Development, making it easier for nonprofits. What I'm looking to do is grow local nonprofits, we have a lot of big corporation nonprofits that are in our community that don't care. When we are making it hard for a local community to take care of ourselves, we're screwing ourselves over for a nonprofit.
Thank you, thanks for coming on, thank you. Let's skip to Pat McGinnis for acceptance of the donation, this will be quick.
Pretty simple, we had a donation of someone sent me nine hundred and twenty dollars to be used towards the wreck park carousel for any fixes we may need, or renovation of horses, or projects we're seeing with over there.
Who's the donation from?
It's from the friends and family of Nancy Ozo-Freymar, who was the cultural affairs person who bears on this under when he was... She was in the best way, so they raised some money.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Matt.
No problem.
Let's go to the fire station location study, please.
Door's under shared. Yeah. If you go to the chief, you might have to slide over. We're over here, right? Pretty good, anyone want?
Yeah, they're good.
That's good, I already got some.
I'm good, I have spikes. Pumpkin spice.
Kids can't find it.
I'll get it.
Thanks, sir.
This is the, this is the plan B.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to mention, Jared and I called a typo, which went on, I think, the second, third page, and so I have to reprint it and send you all.
All right, so, Vish, good evening, my name is Stuart McCutten, I'm the East Street Regional Director for Emergency Services Consulting International. ESCI, I've been in business for about forty years with the consulting arm of the International Association of Fire Chiefs, and we help cities out yourself doing master plans, fire station location studies, and other things of that nature. So, since it looks like we're not doing the PowerPoint, if y'all like, follow along, hit the sale, any points, and go to the report, and then stand for any questions? Starting with page three in the executive summary. So, when, when we did the report, the first thing we needed to do before we could determine future levels of service is determine what is the current level of service. How are, how is the fire department performing? And I'm sorry, I'm coming down with COVID, struggling just a little bit.
Some pumpkin roll?
Yeah, I think. But as we went through evaluating current conditions, we came up with a list of different recommendations that the department, the city may consider. And so, they're listed here in the executive summary. So, short term, just basically thinking of the easily implemented, low cost. Recommend that the department develop and adopt metrics for performance, that way, if they either are not meeting it, or something changes in the system, they've got some trigger points that, that enable to take action. Call processing time, and we'll see this later, especially for MVCs, when we did data now, certain motor vehicle collisions. A lot of time goes by before the fire department's notified, and so that may be a consideration of how that is handled in dispatch. See, turnout time targets, national standard sixty seconds, make it close to about two minutes. In reality, even though the standard sixty seconds, a realistic number for, you know, really good departments, are about a minute and a half. And so, as you're looking at some of these, just, it depends on station design and the number of factors that can influence that, but, you know, maybe a consideration department is going to take as well. And then probably one of the big ones is stores and bunker gear, where it's not absorbing diesel fumes in the bay. Obviously, for existing stations, you know, it is what it's always been, but moving forward, if you're building a facility, it suggests you follow National Fire Protection Standards, and have a separate room that can be ventilated, and that way, diesel fumes and things of that nature aren't impregnating the fire. So, midterms recommendations, the department makes this better, a strategic plan. There's a series of recommendations in this report, this study is kind of the where are we at? Because you need to know where you're at before you know where you're going. So, this study is basically represent the where are we at, some of these recommendations for consideration. Some type of plan will need to be placed in terms of which is the highest priority, and what will that occur, that would be the strategic planning process. Consider a contingency plan for third-party ambulance providers. And then there's a series, a series of building construction, there are foundation issues in some of the stations, apparatus floors, I mentioned the bunker floor, ventilation systems, this would mostly be in new facility. Excuse me. All right, jump ahead, we can go to page nine in the report. So this is the service delivery. This is really the meat and potatoes of the report. This is how are we performing today? This is based off the data, and so while we can't guarantee that it's the right answer, what we can guarantee is based on the data that you're collecting. And so, a lot of times what happens with these studies is you realize or recognize things that you could be doing differently. You could be doing better. So that way, you can capture the metric and answer the questions that a report to. So overall, call volume in Vington is rising slightly. EMS represents the highest percentage, about eighty percent, based off the initial dispatch. About eighty percent of it were EMS. So one of the things for consideration is that, you know, any time you're doing any type of job, you look and say, "What is our primary role and function?" And are we adequately training and putting resources and things of that nature in? There's a hundred different ways to deliver fire services. Whichever way is right for the city, Vington is the right answer. But there are different ways that you can go about doing things to possibly become more effective performance. Next page, page eleven. These are temporal variations, so if we understand when calls are happening, we have a better understanding of how we're stacked. So generally, call volume begins to increase during the summer, decreases some during the winter. It kind of makes sense if you look at the days of the week and hours a day as well. When people get active, you have more demand for services. The weekends in Vington are slower than the midweek. And then when we go to page thirteen, it's a pretty typical pattern. As people wake up, the service demand begins to increase, and as they go to bed at night, it drops back off. Along that line with calls where the people are at the population density, that's a good tool to use to where maybe you have a development in the future, and you have an idea of the density of the homes. You can look at similar areas, take that service demand, and then be able to predict or project what type of impact that might have on emergency services. The next page, fifteen, shows a hotspot map. And so this is showing us where most are called center. And not surprisingly, it's in the center of town. But this isn't telling you how many calls actually occur. It's telling you, based on the relative closeness of these incidents, where our highest activity areas are occurring. And so, the bulk of it is around your downtown area.
What kind of activity you talk about?
Oh, well, so this is, in law enforcement, they call these hotspot maps. And so, if you have a break-in over a month at one-two-one, one-two-three, one-two-five Main Street, it's going to throw a hotspot because there's a lot of activity there. And so that's what this is doing, is saying there's a lot of incidents that are occurring very close to each other.
Are they EMS?
Oh, this is all incidents. It's all incidents.
No questions?
Yeah, the fire departments responding to. But probably about eighty percent of this is going to be EMS. That's your overall percentage.
Is that because there's a lot of apartments in the downtown area, a lot of older people?
Yeah, I mean, anytime you get into a more urbanized area, if I have an apartment building and one person calls a week, it's going to have the same address over and over again, where if you were in house, it's going to be spread out.
And this is just like my call volume? Is that...
Yeah, so basically...
So how do the incidents retract?
So basically, took all your incidents that happened from twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen, geolocated them using GIS software. And then based on that density, that clustering, that's what this map is showing. And so the idea of it is this, and it happens in some places, if I have all my fire station resources here and all my intensive activities over here, and they were thinking about, there would be a gap there, right? We didn't have more, wouldn't have the resources in this location. And so this is just one of these tools, and really, that's what a lot of these are. There's no smoking gun or any, one of these that I hang my hat on. It says you take the totality of the information and look at the big picture. What assumptions are what things? And then that's just to hopefully help you make better data-driven decisions. If you don't understand where it's happening and when it's happening, and then what you may need to either maintain or improve service.
And the nature of your conclusions or your analysis change, taking into account private ambulance services that are responding to some of these things?
These are just, these are just Vington Fire. So it wouldn't include any private ambulance response. We didn't have any of that data. But this is Vington. On the next page, seventeen and eighteen, so Vington is the ISO one. Here, we're showing you how they reached that conclusion. Everything within the city is within five miles of the fire station. You have about eighty-six percent coverage with a mile and a half radius from the fire stations. Next page is your ladder company coverage. They're two and a half miles. And the reason the engines are at one and a half is they're assuming the engine is a first due unit. Ladder companies typically coming on a multi-unit response. And because of that, they're part of assembling the total force that you would need to handle a situation, and that's an eight-minute travel time. So that's why you see that bigger, two and a half miles of ladders. Page twenty, your hydrant coverage, pretty much a hundred percent hydrated. Next page is your four and eight-minute travel, and that's where I alluded to earlier, four minutes for the engine companies. NMPA standard, eight minutes to assemble, to balance your effective response force. And pretty much most of the city is within four minutes. And southern areas are a little longer than that. But back to the hotspot map idea, if we see really very low levels of activity, it may be perfectly acceptable for certain parts not being four minutes.
So Scott, with what you're showing us, compared to cities our size, how would you compare with response time and for buyers or EMS or whatever?
Well, yeah, it looks like you're doing very well. And so, we give the recommendation section. I wouldn't suggest that you reduce the number of units that are out there, because if you start reducing units, there's less units to respond to the demand. And you're doing really well right now. But what I'm hoping to do is provide you all with that information so you can make a informed decision and then understand and feel good about why you made that decision. Page fifteen is the actual travel time. So basically, our green dots are four minutes for us. Yellow dots are four to eight minutes, and then they start turning red at the timeline door. So overall, in the center of the city, they're getting there within four minutes, most of the time of the travel time. And then as they start getting away from the stations, obviously, the travel time's a little longer. Page twenty-three is the effective response force, and this is how many people can you get onto a scene within an eight-minute travel. And this is important, because if we have high-rise buildings for things like that, we want to make sure we can get enough people there. When you have too few of people to do a job, then you're not going to be efficient or effective. But you also have to balance that. But this isn't going to happen every day. This is a high-risk, low-frequency incident for some of these. And so, as you're looking at the coverage, be able to make determinations that's acceptable for you. What also plays in that is call concurrency on page twenty-four. So this is how often are multiple calls occurring? For a previous map, we said if we had everybody in quarters and ready to go, this is what our deployment would look like. When we look at our call concurrency, about forty percent of the time, there's multiple incidents occurring within Vington. And so there wouldn't be that number of fire fires available.
Is concurrence defined in some way? Just that they're happening at exactly the same time, or within the same range?
Yeah, so they're overlapping. So let's say, for example, engine one's on a call, and then before they clear, engine four gets a call. So that's what is better than that overlap, because if engine one's already committed to an incident, they can't respond to the next. But if they're waiting on scene of an EMS incident or a car crash, they're not going to be available to respond to fires or ambulance tools.
And is concurrence counted the same when there are two calls that happen at the same time, but they're calling for different services that aren't conflicting?
Yeah, but it's still a fire department, you know, so whether it's a medical call, or a car crash, or a cafeteria, you've still got personnel and apparatus tied up. And so that's what that's showing you. How often is, is there only one call going on? How often are there multiple calls going on? Because that affects your ability to, one, respond in a timely manner, and two, assemble effective response force. It doesn't so much show up in Vington, because your coverage is pretty good, your street network appears to be pretty good. But you get the larger systems, especially the counties, you really only ever have two problems. Either you can't get there from here, where there's not enough units to respond to the demand. And so, when you have that issue, then you'll start seeing very long travel times, because the units are coming from other places. And let's go ahead and skip to page twenty-eight, so I can keep moving for you all. I saw something I wanted to point out. This is call processing time on page twenty-one. If you look at the motor vehicle collisions, I pulled those out of the EMS section to highlight it. But that's a long time before your fire department resources are being notified. And because of that influence, it's an outlier in the data. It's just the way it's collected. So that may be something you all, or the department's going to address in the future, either how that's documented, or how the notification occurs.
Chief, you can speak to that really briefly. There's times where there's a motor vehicle crash, police respond, fire may not be called immediately. And if there may be a time delay...
Ten, fifteen minutes, somebody start from back pain later on, then they call. And so that's, they start with the on scene, call for the police. When we get dispatched, it might be twenty minutes later. So it shows us, but that's what it shows. And that's all handled by Boone County, so we don't really have...
You're not going to go there unless there's a smoking and a car or fire or...
It must recall. But, yeah, and Ruth, that's the discrepancy.
That's why you see the outlier. And the other thing, Stuart, if you can explain the ninety percent statistic that we're not talking about averages, I'm using it as an industry standard, it may appear higher than what it actually is.
And so to make this a little more clear for you all, and just to see that these are the answers. NMPA seventeen-ten uses the ninety percentile. The reason they're using fractile performance instead of average is because in this fire department data, your average and your median are probably not going to be the same number. And so that's telling us we don't have a normally distributed data set, and so average isn't those reliable or the direct metric used. So ninety percentile arranged all of your data from the smallest to the largest, with the quickest and longest times. And then went down to the ninety percent point. You're saying we can respond this well or faster ninety percent of the time. Or another way to look at it is to say, you know, we know there's going to be data outliers, we know there's going to be mistakes made here or there from the data, so we're going to make the assumption ten are sensitive, is outside of normal responses that there's. But I wanted to show that we have the median and the average. You can see there's a deviation there, so that's why we're using fractile. But also that when you look at these and see a high number, yes, nine times out of ten, they're that fast or quick. So with the travel times, overall, five and a half of the travel times is pretty fast, comparatively speaking, if you're looking at people across the country. Turnout time performance, a little over two minutes. It could be better, and it could be a goal in what the department wants to establish at some point. But really, probably a minute and a half is about as good as anybody can do, even though the standard's sixty seconds. Total response time, or response time performance on page thirty-one. So this is telling us from time the fire department is notified till they arrive on scene, how much time it lasts. You can see the average is about four and a half minutes, where the fractile for all calls is seven, about seven and a half. Seven and a half for response time performance is pretty quick, especially if you're looking at a city this size. You did, they are doing a good job. And then finally, the total response time performance, you can see there's NBCs, again, really that outlier way out from the other data. And it's just something to be cognizant of as you're looking at that information. So that is the bread and butter of the current conditions. And again, the reason we went through that, we want to know where we're at, so we can make a determination of how is this going to look if we do something differently from where we're going to be. So page thirty-nine, here's, again, our current ISO coverage, eighty-six percent coverage for engine companies and eighty-seven and a half percent for the ladders. If we go to the next page, and you can see two maps, four and eight and a travel time. But then also, is a map that looks like a starburst. What those are doing is the software is allocating calls to facilities based on the distance. So one restriction was the four-minute travel. So how many calls can these stations get to within a four-minute travel? And what would their service progress look like? And so, doing that with twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen data, Vington Fire, it's predicted to be able to arrive at ninety-eight and a half percent of the service demand in the city. And so, the reason that's important, we go to these next projections, we can compare it and see what that predicted performance looks like. For our ISO, so now we're looking at, we can consolidate the station to the location you all provided. And what's that difference in coverage? The ISO engine company coverage is about eighty-six, with this one fewer station, we're eighty-three and a half. Our ladder company was about ninety-eight, with this new configuration, again, ninety-seven. So it's pretty close on the coverage.
Did you just, I just want to make sure, we're talking about page forty-three and forty-four, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So that, this is regarding the current ratings and versus a proposed?
Correct.
Ratings for a consolidated facility with the same number of fire fires?
Correct. Correct. And that's the assumption we're making, is the same number of units, same everything else. It's just there's those two existing stations, if they were moved into a new facility at that location, this is what the model's predicting. So on page forty-six, that same starburst map, again, we dropped about a percentage overall of the response performance. And so, so long and the short of it is this, if the city in Vington decides, determines that you all want to proceed with consolidating and building a new facility, you're going to be pretty close on your performance, so long as you don't reduce the number of units in service. Another option may be, as opposed to building a brand-new facility, perhaps rehabbing one of the existing facilities or other options of that nature. But if you have something generally in that, where your two stations are now, or anywhere in between, for the most part, your performance is going to be pretty close. And so, you know, what I would suggest to the city is that, as you're looking and working through this and the fire departments, you're doing reports well, then if you have any questions or considerations, the fire department has the foundational information to make good informed decisions. Yes, sir?
I'm looking at the two starburst maps, or whatever you... I guess I don't understand how the modeling works, that it looks like the proposed location looks like it will be able to cover greater area than the two existing locations.
Sort of. So what you're saying is the model, what the model's doing is, is one of the restrictions for this one was the four-minute travel time. And so what it's trying to do is establish the largest service area with the most number of calls within four minutes travel. One, the one where we have the two existing stations, because they're both competing for that space, right? It's getting a divide down the middle. When those two don't exist and we have one in the middle, now it's still traveling at four minutes, but it's not competing with the neighboring station. Does that make sense?
I mean, I don't know, I don't have a deep enough understanding of how fire department resources work to know. But it does look like there is a slight difference in the models here. They're not exactly the same charts, correct?
Yeah, we're getting rid of station three and station four.
I mean, I saw from that, yeah.
I was just like, if we put a better one, a newer one in the middle, is it going to still reach everybody?
I understand that there's one fewer station on the second one. I'm talking about the statistical model, and it looks like the the travel time and, yeah, the travel time and the quintile is different.
So you're saying that they're working with a different data set?
Well, I mean, I'm just looking at the numbers that are right on the two different charts. You've got travel twenty-seven, five thirty-three, and travel twenty-seven, two twelve, or two seventeen, and then ninety-eight point five percent and ninety-seven point four percent.
So what we're saying is, if you go to four stations, you have about one percent less of your calls would be within a predictable four-minute travel.
So like this, this, this call, for example, isn't on this map, because it wouldn't be within four minutes anymore, right? Because the stuff is too far away.
Does that make sense? Sort of, yeah. I need to read this thing.
What I'd like to, what I'd like to see myself as a new state-of-the-art fire department. And keeping the same amount of apartment, keeping the same amount of vehicles. And when this was brought forward, I mean, I drove through, just to drive to see what was going on, how long it took me. It took me three to four minutes to get to most every place, even at the new location. So, I'm just looking at it to, I mean, to give a new state-of-the-art fire department, that's something the city, I personally feel needs. Because the stations that you have now, chief, are, they're old. And some of them were built in the eighteen hundreds.
Eighteen hundreds, they're old. Pretty well maintained.
I realize that, but they're getting to the point where, how are they insulated? Are the roofs going? How's the floors doing in them? Because we've got the one down here that you've got it, and that was built in the seventies. That's our newest fire department, isn't it? A station? Or is the one over by the banquet plaza in New Orleans?
That's our newest one.
That was your newest one. And I'm just looking at these older stations that are definitely going to need major maintenance there eventually.
Well, even the one down here needs major...
Well, even the one down here needs major.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. And so I, this is what I'm looking at, and to get a state-of-the-art fire department, and I'm sure there's grants out there of some kind, to help build these for the city. And I wish Chuck was here, because he might, you know, know how much it would save the taxpayers as far as.
Yeah, is there any financial analysis that you guys did, adjacent to the report?
So would it be putting more people at risk for residents by having high containment?
Well, that's what I'm showing you, the particular models, and that's why I have to, to compare, so we can say, you know, with this model, what's the predicted performance, and we're at ninety, ninety-eight and a half?
One percent less.
So it's one percent less, and so that's what I want you all to have that information to know. Is it, is it better for the community to spend money to rehab two fire stations and maintain the way it is, or to build a facility, or possibly to do up some other configuration? But if you do that, here's about the difference.
So what is your one percent? What does that come to, I mean?
It is, over three years, it's three hundred calls, so about a hundred calls a year.
That what?
That would be outside of that four-minute travel time.
So outside of four minutes, where would that put it?
Four and a half, five, just something greater than four. But, you know, so that's why I had the one with the current, so we can see what is our predicted performance with this configuration compared to the future one, what's the difference on it? It's pretty close, you know, it is pretty close, so. That way, as you all are moving forward, you can make, if someone asks the question, you know, what would be the impact if we did this, about a hundred calls a year would be outside of four minutes, maybe that'd be four and a half.
So it'd be a minimal, minimal difference for people who probably, not that they would even notice, and you would end up with a new facility that would service a broader area.
Oh, yes, assuming that you can maintain the same number of units.
The proposed location is right on the brandy line there, that location is pretty commonly seen as a place that floods. Specifically, the Robinson Street underpass between the north side and the east side, in most major rain events, it's floods. So with a fire department that would be covering the north and east sides out of that location, if there was a major rain event when the fire department is often used, did you guys look into that underpass, which is the main connector between the east side and the north side, and how that might impact response times? Because if that underpass is flooded, and. The Robinson Street is what floods.
Then you go question.
Right, absolutely, but that changes, that must change the response time, and did you guys look at?
I'm sure it would, but I mean, if we had a crash out of the highways, it would change if, we knew it was snowing heavily, so I mean, there's all, any number of factors that could affect it. But that's why I'm trying, we provided the current with the future, so that you can get an idea of an apple and apple comparison. You know, it said any number of things could affect response time performance, and you just have to take it as it comes.
So we have to, could, this is just a hypothetical question, could, with the modeling that you set up, could you put a different data set in there, like looking at a data set that correlates to a flood event, in the city opinion?
Yeah, we could, we could put a restriction in there, or a delay, so wherever that, you know, location you select, we could leg it back, and we'll do that a lot with jurisdictions have major train routes running through the community, split counties like Worth and South have, and the city, we would do that there. But whether that fire station is there or somewhere else, if they have to travel through that area, it's still going to impact the travel time.
Right, but the point is that, right now, the residents of the east side have a dedicated fire station during rain events. Now, that fire station is elsewhere, that, and shares, and it's sort of in a connector area between the north and the east sides. I think that at least some constituents might ask, well, you know, during disaster periods, when we really rely on our emergency services, is it, is it worth an additional three minutes of travel time in these really, really important times? I don't know, I'm just saying that's definitely a question that I would want answered. And I asked, I asked a question too, and one of the things that we're looking at is, there may be times where the emergency is on the west side, the east side fire station needs to provide equipment, and they can't get out of the east side safe because there's flooding. So it kind of works both ways, it's good when they're over there, but then if they need to go at any point on the other side of that east side area, if there's flooding, it's blocked, so it prevents people from getting in, but also prevents them from getting out. Because I brought that question as well, and that's why we looked at kind of the macro, we don't know where the emergency will be at the same time. But that's certainly a consideration in terms of citing any potential implications.
Absolutely, but like I said, you, I don't feel it's our role to tell you what to do, it's our role to try to provide you with the information, so you can make the informed decision to do what's best.
We appreciate that.
Stuart, Councilman Taylor and I met with you some months ago, I asked you to compare Lake City's with ours, and the number of staff we have, number of firemen we have, and did you do that?
Basically, you have that done in your ISO study, and so Binghamton's ISO one, and so what, so what that's suggesting is, is that you are appropriately staffed and appropriately deployed fire department. If, you know, to look at other cities' data, because everyone's a little bit different, you know, what's, you know, the right answer in Binghamton may not be the right answer for Lakeland, Florida, or anywhere in between, so it's tough to really benchmark in that way. ISO is probably the best one that you can get, but by being ISO one or ISO two, that's basically telling you that you are adequately staffed, adequately deployed, and that you're, on paper at least, should be doing all the right things that you do.
Okay, great, are there questions or comments?
The chief is here, do you have any comments that you want to share with the city council out of their review?
No, they did a pretty thorough study, and given a lot of input on it, mayor's office is very.
Sure.
Helsa, look, you have a question, go ahead.
I just have one more question, from the conclusion, there's this sentence that I was interested in maybe hearing a little bit more on, it says, "The deciding factor will be the level of acceptable risk by the community and the cost. Factors to consider may include the age of the population served, the age of the community, the age and type of structures protected, and the ability of the fire department and the resources that is given to provide desired level of protection." How does the age of our population, for instance, affect? Because our population is aging.
So usually, when you look at data, we had that, we talked about where the people were at, and where their activity, your call volume comes from. So you would anticipate that if your population increases, your call volume would increase, and the same is if it decreased. There's areas in the country, like around Detroit, where their population is decreasing and their call volume is increasing, it's kind of going the opposite way you anticipate. And the reason for that is, people who are replacing the ones that are leaving, and at a slower rate doing this, basically call emergency services for everything. So the people that have access to healthcare, and go to doctors and do those things are leaving, and are being replaced by people who don't have healthcare or anything else, and they call nine-one-one for everything. And so, just as an example, if your population is growing over, overall, you would anticipate your service demand is going to decrease as well, because as you get older, you tend to start needing more emergency services. That answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you, Stuart, appreciate you coming down.
Thank you all so much for your time, I appreciate it.
I'm just, he's crashing, CDAC recommendations.
Thanks for having us, this is the fiscal year forty-five to twenty twenty public service, CDAC recommendations to city council and mayor's office, probably the mayor may already have a copy of it. But before we begin, I would like to raise a potential conflict of interest issue that came up during the process, and go over that very quickly, so just on purposes of full disclosure. It concerns the homeless coalition coordinator, Rebecca Rathmel. Now, she's an invaluable resource in the community, she's been the homeless coordinator, I think, for two years now, but she helped work the COCs, the COCs made recommendations for the budgets, the action plan budgets, which included shaving a certain amount of money for ESG, which is the emergency, it's the homeless funds, for putting it towards shelters, for street outreach, to homeless, to print prevention. And she also coordinated the committee that met to determine, to review the agencies that actually applied for those fundings. One of the agencies that applied was the YWCA, and the committee that was organized by Rebecca made a recommendation to CDAC of thirty thousand dollars for street outreach coordinator. Well, I found out just the other day, well, not just the other day, I'm under oath, that Rebecca is now the street outreach coordinator. So obviously, this could present a potential conflict of interest, I spoke to corporation council to make sure, you know, we want to make sure this is all done well, per discussion of that, I arranged a special session with CDAC after they had already made their budget recommendation with Rebecca to come in, with the YWCA executive director, Carol Coppins, to come in, for them to go over the timeline. And so I provided the description of what's going on there with the timeline, I apologize, it's, I get used to doing the alphabet soup with the HUD speed sometimes, but I hope it's clear. CDAC basically asked questions, and at the end, determined that they were comfortable, the original recommendation, the thirty thousand dollars for the street outreach coordinator did not change the budget at all. So if you have any questions about that specifically, Jerry and I can answer that, or jump straight to the funding.
Go straight to the funding.
Okay. Your humble.
Well, as you can see, from the numbers there, we made some recommendations that have not followed the same recommendations we've had in the past three or four years that I've been there anyway. And perhaps the biggest one that sticks out to most of me, and there's two of them, one is the recommendation for buying, where they requested twenty thousand dollars, and we chose to provide eight thousand, one hundred and five dollars. And the other one was for the American Civic Association, which were looking for nineteen thousand, nine hundred, and came in at eighty-eight hundred. The rest of them pretty much fall in line, or relatively close to what the other agencies were looking for.
Does American Civic Association know? I don't remember them applying before.
This is the first time they've ever officially applied for CDVG.
Jerry, the other one that has reduced quite a bit is cafeterias.
Yes.
TTLP.
Yep.
That's the transitional.
Yeah, that's, that was part of the recommendations that we received from the homeless coalition.
Isn't that for teens, the transitional housing from cafeterias?
Yes.
And what's the issues with that, where they, I mean, they asked for forty-four thousand, and that's the only teen transitional that we have, isn't it?
I can mention this, I've had all the discussions. The funding that the teen program applied for comes out of the emergency shelter slash street outreach funds with the ESG funds. The teen transitional living program is not an emergency shelter, however, it is grandfathered in, as it has received funds in the past, to be continued funding. Basically, a few years ago, HUD changed the way the funding, changed those sort of projects they would allow under ESG. If TTLP came now as a new program, they would get nothing from ESG.
They would have to go with the other.
They would have to go, well, you have to go to CDVG or some other homeless funding. They don't technically qualify under the ESG funds, but they have been grandfathered in, they continue providing funding under transitional due to HUD rules. But when the committee met, of the pre-SEAD committees, the COC committee that met, the issue is that they have to be evaluated in accordance with every other emergency shelter. So if you're applying for emergency shelter fund, we have to compare you to all the other emergency shelters. And so TTLP can handle like thirty kids a year, and like the Y can handle six hundred or a thousand people a year. Teen transitional living programs, so. Yeah, sorry, I do apologize, and I gotta get used to that, so that's kind of the issue that the committee found, and they find that pretty much every year, they're searching.
I personally worked with them in the past, and we made sure, twice to make sure they got the funding, and twice they promised they'd be looking at permanent funding, and I even worked with them on it, and I am efficiently able to work with them on that, I know enough about it. They still refused to take the choices that were handed to them, and they just decided that they didn't want to go after grant funding, which they did find available in order to get in permanent housing, so I'm kind of, I'm a little tired of that.
They currently are allowed under, as grandfathered in, under emergency shelter, but the moment they don't receive any funding for a year, they're blocked, they're blocked out. They can still apply for CDVG funding in the future, they've done it before, but I believe, previous years, there was a recommendation of not being. So that's the issue with TTLP, or what it's kind of treating.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Steve, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
And I just would like to say that I pass it on to clerk's office, but there's a lot of vacancies that are coming up, or people, new people that need to be appointed, so please take that into consideration, because the CDAC does restart in January.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That will be up to the next city council.
Yes, but you'll have to talk to Ken on the specifics to get about that, to make sure of that.
Thank you very much. Shon McGee.
Ray's here.
Yes, Ray's here. Ray's standing, it's your next one.
RL one nine dash two two two, please go. RL for supplemental agreement with Barton Le Judas for construction inspection services on the State Street pedestrian landscape improvements project and the State Street traffic signal upgrade. Due to the extended time for the project, it caused Barton Le Judas to come up short with their predictions, so they're asking for, it's forty-five thousand, to complete their work.
How much was the last one? That we approved? For State Street? For the traffic signal?
This is the first supplemental, there hasn't been.
I know there hasn't, but there was something we approved for State Street for the traffic signals.
I think it was. The DOT agreement?
Grant funding?
Yeah.
It was at the grant store. I don't know. The DOT agreement, maybe? This is a DOT project?
Right, the DOT project would have been, would have been the agreement with the DOT to fund it, and it would have been an agreement with Barton Le Judas.
Right, we went through with Barton Le Judas then, so they're asking for more money now for why?
Because the project ran longer, so their, their, their original fee that we contracted with was for a certain amount of man hours. They've exceeded the man hours due to the longer time extension that was given to the contract.
Okay, all right, I understand this, thank you.
Other questions or comments on it? Okay, Ray, let's move on.
The RL nineteen dash two two three is a supplemental agreement, again, with Barton Le Judas for construction inspection services on the Front Street Gateway Project, and that's the same reasoning, it's their, even though we, the engineering department assisted Barton Le Judas with manpower, they ended up using more man hours due to the excessive length of time it took to do that project. And they're looking for, and I believe this one's almost the same, forty-five thousand.
Ray, on the State Street project.
Yes, sir.
When we see, when we foresee all those lights being up and running. When we see, when we foresee all those lights being up and running.
By the end of this week, midweek. In fact, I was told that, but I'll tell you by the end of the week, in case something comes up.
Okay. And then, uh, what about the final? The pole that's in the middle of the street right now or, not in the middle of the street, but by, um, Twenty Holly Street, this, this street.
Return.
Yeah.
There's no curb protecting it or anything.
Oh, they, they'll finish the concrete work, the first concrete work, I think, of this.
Could deal with Barton La Judas.
That may not be done by the end of this week, but the lights will be on by the end of this. We'll hope to wrap up the project entirely.
What's that?
Think there's contracts till the end of the month, but I know they want to get out of here. Wrap up all the checklist items and then they'll be all done.
Yeah, what was, uh, what was the delay?
Um, the, there were a couple delays, but the, the biggest one was the fact that the, uh, emergency signal out in front of the fire department, the arms and the poles didn't match up. They have a bolted connection. And when they fabricated them, they made, they made mistakes in the bolt pattern and they couldn't get the bolts to fit. They had to remanufacture them and that's what the delay.
Oh, okay.
They had to send those back and remake it, new ones and send them on. So, that, that took a long time.
And why, why couldn't they continue with the other part during that, during that waiting period?
They did some of it, but then they also, because of the, uh, the concrete work was subcontracted, subcontracted out to a minority so that they could get their, they had to hit the minority limit. And so, uh, they had to wait for that contractor to finish up some other work to come back and to do it. And we could have told them to use your own forces and get it done, but then there's a penalty for not hitting your.
What about the remaining concrete work that still doesn't?
They'll probably do that themselves.
Tell Barton La Judas that, uh, they want ninety thousand altogether, cut it down to eighty, we'll definitely sign.
Other questions or comments?
Saving the taxpayers ten thousand?
I'll pay you Tuesday for hamburger today.
Yeah, there you go.
Other questions or comments?
No. We may be looking at, at, uh, engineering fees and penalties for Front Street. So, if we are able to get those, then that would also.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
Jerry, you want to move on next?
I think Robert Murphy will be up first.
Robert, all right.
Do, uh.
Oh, here's Bob.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, folks.
Hey, Bob.
Hey, how you doing?
Good evening, Bob.
Okay, I am here today.
Robert.
Robert.
Actually, I'm here to request approval from, uh, city councils for a BLDC loan to Damage Holdings LLC, now three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to support the purchase of thirty-one Front Street to house their, their business, which is Janus and Anderson, uh, P L L C. Um, I can tell you, this is one I, I, I bring with pride, uh, a little bit. Uh, we, we started off, and notwithstanding the, uh, the newspaper article, uh, this has started off in the Binghamton Economic Development Office with help from, uh, Mayor David, uh, to, to start moving this along. I, I have talked to Mr. Platsky about that. But, uh, we did move forward, uh, from the, you know, from that to, actually, beginning is, is just, you know, preventing the property from being sold previously, uh, to, for student housing, uh, which was the original plan, uh, repeated or repeated attempts to terminate student housing. Uh, this is one of the reasons why this is a relatively large amount loan of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but we thought it was an important part of, of their, their needing to finance this at a low interest rate to make that work. And, uh, and with spoken quote, Greg Janus and Todd Anderson, uh, we've worked to put this in, but load of, load of moderate income using a CDBG loan, uh, via, you know, facility to do this.
Is this interest rate?
Uh, it is going to be, well, when they, when they lock in, it's probably going to be around, uh, three point seven five percent. It's, uh, our, our, our rate is three quarters of Wall Street Journal Prime, uh, when they lock in. And so, that could, if they don't lock in, you know, so they have the final approval and that happens, it locks them over. I can tell you the exact number, but that'll be somewhere between three point four-nine and four, four-oh.
Other questions or comments?
What's their, uh, business plan?
The business plan, what they're gonna do is they're gonna basically take what it, what's in the offices space right now, uh, have you still in the building?
Yeah, great.
So, the offices are right now, they're going to, uh, renovate that as far as, like, clean it up. They're not doing any major changes. And, uh, they're gonna clean up the front, uh, the, the front of the building. You have, uh, so I can tell you, listen, they're gonna be, I can give you the list if you're not careful. Uh, trim existing trees on the north side of the property, remove shrubs, form general site cleanup, but, you know, cut and patch asphalt driveway, re-strike driveway, uh, remove existing ground mound and sign, replace with historically sensitive signage, repoint existing brick masonry as necessary, repoint existing stone masonry as necessary, clean brick masonry surfaces in, in key locations, repair brick on first floor elevation under window for water deterioration, repair column bases at front portico, which HUD would everyone have seen. Uh, repair front portico, soften ceiling, repair exterior scraping painting and repair, repair damage to existing dormers, repair column bases on the south side of the portico.
There is, there is a, uh, an amount, what, what's the amount of money that they're gonna spend?
Two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
That's what they're putting in for. Um, this came through the BLDC and which I attended a meeting. The finance committee approved the, the loan came in front of the, the whole BLDC directors to pass unanimously because you are putting a, a really good business there. They're gonna also have an area that's gonna be open to the public for events that they want to, I think, rent that out, whatever, as part of the plan.
The existing ball.
So, they're gonna clean up the property, they're gonna keep it as a business and it's a win-win. Plus, the city will be, uh, a first mortgage on the, on the building. So, it's the first time we've had a first, uh, because most of these things, we're, we're like a bridge loan, so we're second and third behind a bank or a couple of banks. So, this, at least here, we have, uh, a first for this building.
I'll defer to my council. So, what, uh, what's the plan for their current office space? Is that just gonna be empty now?
Yeah, their, their current office space, they rent, they rent, uh, office space at eighty-four, uh, eighty-four Court Street, which is owned by the Cragians, uh, who I'm sure will be looking to, you know, fill it up as soon as possible. The, the, really, the, uh, the real challenge to this actually, the real challenge to get a solid owner and, and into usage that's consistent with the historical nature of that building, especially in light of all that, the, the property is, you know, not directly, but almost directly is the, uh, the old, uh, I can't remember what it's called, but it would be the, you know, the Daniel LaRoy Building, which is, uh, the oldest building in Binghamton, it's from eighteen oh nine. Uh, and just, you know, instead of having everything devolving to student housing on Front Street, it's a, it's a, we're kind of buck, you know, we're bucking that trend as far as it goes. And then, it also supports, uh, the fifty Front Street, uh, you know, private as well.
And why do they want this? I mean, obviously, it's a beautiful building. Is it because they want their own property? Are they expanding? Are they getting new jobs?
Yeah, they are, well, here's, they were looking, they're looking to both, uh, they have been expanding and they're looking, they're, they're kind of over, they're overfill their, their rented space and they're, they're actually looking to purchase something. They've been eyeing properties actually in Syracuse, Endica and Endicott and, uh, but they have, uh, they actually were really seriously looking at, uh, you know, at both Endica and Endicott. And, uh, and then we, this became available to them, uh, after the other property, you know, they thought it was lost to the student housing. The, the Janus and Anderson is a historic, uh, they're a design firm, uh, and they do historic buildings. And this actually gives them an ability to, uh, give their, you know, their customers and clients, you know, this is what we can do for you. I think, I think that's a large part of, of that, uh, because it's, it's actually a much bigger building than they kind of need right now for their offices, but they can, they, they, they feel that they can use that other space for, uh, communal, community and, uh, you know, as I was gonna say, venue for both, you know, weddings, parties, you know, big events kind of thing. The, the, of course, you know, obviously, the, if you've been in there, you saw the old, the ballroom and all the, you know, the, the rooms there, they've been a party fixture for, uh, for decades. So, we're, we're excited, uh, to have them, you know, reinvesting in Binghamton, uh, in pursuit, and again, you know, helping to shore up, uh, you know, Front Street. I think it's a great thing.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you.
I mean, they're only hiring two people and the next week is maybe.
I mean, it's like, where it's moving people from, you know.
Yeah, I know.
You're looking at this office here and you're looking at this office here.
Well, they're, they want to purchase those.
It's better than it being vacant.
Yeah.
We'll get the money back.
Especially that.
That's gorgeous. You don't want it to.
Jerry, you want to start with two-two-seven?
Uh, sure. This is the.
Really?
This is Sean in TLP. They're up at a busy planning commission meeting. Um, this is a resolution to amend the, um, way that small cell, uh, wireless facilities are regulated by the city. Essentially speaking, we want to change it because right now, there's really no clear avenue, uh, as it relates to small cells. I think one of the installations had to go through planning commission and this was a part of our overall zoning update, but we wanted to break this out as Verizon Wireless is heavily interested in investing in wireless infrastructure in Binghamton. We are behind the times as it relates to developing a wireless network. Um, anyone who goes business or lives downtown will tell you that, uh, wireless speeds, especially in high, uh, traffic areas are, are very bad. Uh, I believe still live downtown. In the afternoon, it grinds to a halt. It's because of the demand and the need for, for more cell towers. So, uh, this zoning legislation would make it that, um, the, uh, review of small cell wireless facilities would not be subject to QUAD except for within historic districts or, uh, when located within fifty feet of a landmark property on the state or national register of historic places. Um, this would be in public right away. These would be on telephone poles. What's, what's the point of that? It's to provide for, um, more efficient installation of small cell wireless.
And, and right now, so any construction on city property, public property would go to QUAD.
Right.
So, even though I've got ten small cells, we're gonna be on ten locations, all ten of them, we'd go to QUAD as opposed to QUAD approving the, you know, basic design, what they're gonna look like. And in the historic district, because then you want to design what the, what each one looks like.
So, then who, who would approve it under this amended charter?
If the, the planning department initial, that what, what they do is they create the criteria. And as long as you meet that criteria, then the planning department could.
And what is a small wireless site facility?
It's, it's.
Those things that we, we approved the contract pertaining to it earlier this year, they're basically like these.
They're small.
Boxes. Yeah, they're like big, these long, long boxes on the telephone poles. You see them popping up all over the place.
You really don't notice it.
So, with the, the advent of 5G technology, um, it is like a very.
Contract with what?
What's that? Oh, okay. Um, so, the geographic area that 5G serves is very limited. So, when we eventually get the 5G technology, it's going to need the infrastructure in place for, from really like a block by block basis. This is for the future of autonomous vehicles, this is for the future of, you know, uh, streaming services, uh, potentially, you know, the end of cable internet service in your home, that type of thing. Uh, but Verizon is very interested in, in getting more service. Binghamton is a high-need area and disposers.
Questions or comments? Hi, Jerry.
Next two RLs are related, uh, nineteen dash two-two-four and nineteen dash two-two-five. Um, the city over the course of, of several years acquired four properties from, uh, Broom County, averting them from the auction process, all on the north side, all in various states of disrepair. We got them because they were, um, severely blighted, but still had the potential for rehabilitation. The most challenging among them was Thirty-Nine Muncil Street in front of Liberty and Muncil. Actually, a historic property, um, that probably we couldn't demolish, so we were stuck between a rock and a hard place. Uh, Mayor David reached out to some non-profit housing partners, notably OFB, who put in an application for rehabilitation of these properties to provide homeless housing, uh, opportunities through the Office of Temporary Disability Services, OTBA Housing Assistant Program. They were not successful their first time through, were successful this last round. And a seven point seven million dollars was the largest housing award in New York State as part of this last round. Uh, the properties are part of the packet, you have some photos of them. Uh, the, draw your attention beyond the Thirty-Nine Muncil Street property, the property.
Photos are, I don't see the property number on the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
You've got big tax.
Big course.
Oh, yeah, you'll be able to recall that.
For example, on.
No, they're, they're right on both sides.
That's, uh, four and three.
That's very.
Yes, it's a historic building, um, again, one that's, probably we shouldn't have demolished, so it won't be demolished. So, uh, we're doing two things. This is the sale of these four city-owned parcels for the purchase price as listed. That's a consideration, given that we were actually charged that for Muncil Street, uh, backed by Broom County several years ago. And then also the, uh, allocation of a hundred thousand dollars in federal toll money to support the development of this project. I think everyone's copied on the news release. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. Okay. I thought that was there, right?
Earlier during the joint meeting, um, Chuck brought up an RL for a launch, it's the construction management services of Jacob's. So, I'm just gonna send around the RL that he gave me and this kind of sheet, go with that. And then, um, does anyone have any questions?
This one's still, this all gets paid from the work he did from August.
Until November.
Give me a second, Jason. Do you have any questions?
Yes. Um, I, this, this past week, I was, uh, I was contacted by somebody at the university who told me that, um, Councilman Skaringe had a NPA intern sometime in the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen timeframe. Um, and I was wondering, I guess, Corporation Counsel left the room. I was just curious to know if Corporation Counsel was aware of this, but I guess I'm just saying it out for the record at this point.
Counsel, let me say, I wasn't gonna bring any input since you brought it up. I heard, um, I wish you could listen. You were about Joseph last week, right? And you mentioned that you filed a grievance with, uh, Organization New York State Against Perpetual Counsel and Kent Frank. So, did you file the grievance?
Haven't filed yet. We're still waiting on a, um, FOEL request to come back.
Can we get a copy of that grievance when you file it, City Council, the counsel?
Yeah, the, the process with the attorney grievance committee and the appellate division court is that the grievance gets filed and then they send a copy of the grievance to the aggrieved, you know, to the attorney that is, uh, having the grievance filed against them. And they then file a response with the same committee.
So, you, you feel you were wronged by Corporation Counsel?
I, I don't feel comfortable talking about it, given that there's this.
You're talking about Joseph, so, I mean, how can we not comfortable talking here?
I, I, I'm not talking about specifics on, I'm not interested in talking about specifics right now because there's this active outside counsel thing and, and there's really still no clear explanation of what exactly is being looked into, who, what, when, where, why, so.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.